Y'all the praise and glory for being here, Lord. We just thank you for getting us to this point in this school year. We just pray a special blessing over our teachers and our students and just pray that they'll have your guidance through the end of this school year. Just pray that the business that goes on tonight brings you honor and glory in everything that's done. Lord, we just thank you for the school system. We thank you for the leadership and just ask that your hand be upon each one here in Jesus' name.
Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda presented? Motion by Mr. Farrell, second by Mr. Jenkins. Those in favor, ayes.
Ayes.
opposed, motion passed. Are there any additions? Would anyone like to remove any item from the consent agenda for discussion? If not, do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Davidson, second by Mr. U. Banks. Those in favor?
Ayes.
opposed, motion passed. Dr. Collins, superintendent of the day.
Needing everyone.
Yeah.
Believe it. We have a few folks speak to you tonight, so I'm gonna try to go quickly here. A couple of things that we want to put the Devo thought in your folder that I shared at the principal meeting every month. That was a particular good one, I think, because I like that guy. Ronald Reagan quote there, he was one of my favorites, so great communicator. So anyway, let you read through that when you get a chance. That was kind of a challenge that we did for all of our leadership there. And then, the next one, I know Mr. McCann asked me about this, it's the last one, he's grinning at me right now, so I know he saw what I put on here. So if you'll open up your folders, you'll see, we did some research on this between Hunter and his team and Mr. Glenn and Mr. Donnie and a number of folks. We dug through some stuff and we got this information. I'll be real honest with you, this is, this was, it was good doing it, but I don't think I've ever seen this all together on one sheet before, so that was nice. We actually even went to some of the buildings to make sure the plaques were pulled. Jeff, Jeff gave us some stuff, I mean, so we could get all this on here. So, if you'll look, just a very basic, number one, look farther right first. See all that blue, that sea of blue, those are new roofs and that was bought with Esther money. So if anybody tells you, you know, oh, can't believe we got, we put new roofs on all those buildings with Esther money. So those are, and then those are gonna last for a minute, right? So the, one of them's 2019, all the rest were put up well. And then, three of them 2019, a couple of them 2021, a couple of them 2022, and those roofs are gonna last. What's lifespan on those roofs? Where's the number? What's lifespan on a roof? Thirty years, twenty-five years?
I mean, they had forty on a few of ours, so I'd say thirty.
So, I'll be dead by the time we need another roof there, y'all. Just saying, I had before that.
I mean.
So for you, that is correct, that's right, we're holding out there. And Central Office, they actually put one on in 2016. So, and the other buildings that aren't on there are fairly new buildings, or quite frankly, a new roof isn't going to improve them any. Like the, the.
Shop in the bus and transportation, roof's not gonna do much there.
So anyway, that's the number. Then if you look down, you're constructed. The oldest school building we have is 1975, that's that number in orange right there, and that's Charger Academy. If you go down to, let's see, Covenant High would be the next oldest, 1981, right? The newest building, school building we have is Atoka Elementary School, 2008, so that one's sixteen years old, and that's the newest one we have. Which I kind of think speaks, Mr. McCann, to some of the points that you were making and we were talking about at the last meeting, right? Is, that's the newest one we have and it's sixteen years old. So, then you look through the other ones and then obviously, the oldest building we have is the one that we're currently in, 1962. Of course, remember, that was the middle section. These wings were added on, let's see, in 2008. So, but that middle section was the original and of course, the buildings back there, the transportation building and maintenance building were both 1963. And those are original, right? Those are on the historic register, aren't they? So, yeah, just if you want to go check those out, we have an open house, the gates are open and you can go check those buildings out. They're gonna be on American Pickers sometime soon. So, but anyway, that's just, I thought that was kind of neat to be able to see that and all those renovations. I'm glad that you asked us to do that. And then if you look down that middle column, you're renovated. I tried to explain it, you know, without taking up too many sheets of paper, I tried to explain down there at the bottom kind of how that was done. Again, we got a lot of information from Glenn and Donnie, because this would have been, you know, under a lot of his time here, so we put a lot of those in there. But as you'll see, really no major renovations, except for like add-ons. Most of those renovations that were big were add-ons.
Or additions.
Correct.
So they renovated, yeah.
Correct, not renovated the building, just added onto it. That, that is correct. I mean, I was, I was the principal of Brighton Middle when we added on to those hallways, added, I think, two classrooms per hallway down there. And that was just adding more space. They didn't do anything to the rest of the building, they just added that. So, same on, on, on the rest of these. So, anyway, as we, as we come up, and this will be a good time for me to say this too. My plan is at the May meeting, to be able to give you a new five-year capital projects plan, if you go to look over. And then I'll hopefully be able to show it to the finance committee like the following month, like in June. You know, we won't know yet, funding source for that or exactly how we're gonna do it. But we're gonna basically break that down in a five-year increment based on how badly we need things. We know, we've talked a number of times, that the bleachers are bad. We need to replace the bleachers. Those are big-ticket items, right? And a lot of people use them. So, you know, we'll start there, like, you know, how we're gonna start doing that, bleachers, cafeteria tables, things like that, more HVAC equipment. You know, all that kind of thing. But we're gonna put those things in there and then Hunter and his crew are really doing a good job. They're gonna meet, they have set times, they're gonna start meeting with all the principals as well, as we're working through that. And let the principals come in one at a time and have feedback with them on, here's some things that we see too, that maybe you're not seeing from outside in, that are some good things. So, we'll have feedback from them as well. So, again, we hope to present that in, in May. I'm gonna tell you, show you all that five-year plan. Remember, it's gonna be malleable, we're gonna have to move it around a little bit, okay, just depending on what all we need. And then we'll present that, so that we can spend that. And remember, we have multiple sources, so, you know, cafeteria tables and stuff like that, remember cafeteria, remember, they have a, they're, they're on fund balance. And, you know, we've already spoken with Mrs. Sabrina on there, she's not here and James isn't here, so I can say this out loud. She's more than happy to use some of that money to do stuff like that, walk-in coolers that we need, cafeteria, I think we can help with some of that there too. So then again, we'll present multiple options for you as we go. But, this man right here won't let us go too far in the hole without, you know, sounding the alarm either. So, you know, we'll make sure I'm on track, but, you know, we're all on the same page here, I'm all about making these buildings look better. I mean, we need to, we do what we can. As you can see, they're ancient, so we need to make sure we, we do what we need to. Believe it or not, that's all I have, y'all, unless you have questions for me about this. All right, so, next on, under my report, I believe, I'm gonna have Hunter come up and then he's gonna introduce Linkus, our new construction manager, our construction manager. And we're really excited to have their, their group with us, I'm gonna let Hunter introduce them. And then we're gonna have an Esser update for you by these two fine-looking people here in just a little bit, okay? Mr. Hunter.
Thank you, Dr. Collins. So before turning over to Linkus, who I know we're all very excited to see, you're a year later, working through a lot of challenges. To touch up based on the capital improvement projects and to the fact that they haven't been renovated since my short tenure here. The bathrooms, that's, this bathroom project was a big deal, you know, to get in and really to seal up things that you couldn't otherwise, got rid of with epoxies. Though, we'll be honest, to continue, we'll need to paint those more often, I mean, those are high-use, they get, they get nasty, but. I do, we do look forward to continuing to feel the excitement that we did whenever I first came on with the new roofs, the new HVACs, the tracks. All that was good, positive feeling and they're like, man, we're doing a good job. Of course, the tornado put a halt on a lot of those, but definitely looking forward to getting back on those improvements that the school system definitely needs. So, if we move forward, there, you'll feel that positive energy and look forward to having those. But I do want to introduce Mr. Perry, he's with Linkus Construction guys, he will be explaining to you guys to see more process if you guys have questions. There, he'll explain his excitement as they come in and pick up the, pick up the nest that we've got, so this time I'll turn it over to Perry.
Thanks, Hunter. Thank you for the invitation tonight, I appreciate, appreciate the invitation. We're super excited about getting started. Again, my name is Perry Miller, Director of Operations for Linkus Construction. One of the three owners of, of the company, my two other brother-in-laws, Jamie Linkus and Rusty Linkus, there's three of us that own the company. But we're, we're fully engaged now, I wanted to kind of, I'll kind of take your lead. I wanted to kind of give you a brief kind of recap of kind of where we are right now. And open up the floor or any questions you guys may have about the construction management process and kind of where we are now. So, the, C-Mar is construction manager at risk. The process is being, currently being used by multiple school, school districts across the state, and so really across the country. We just recently finished the new high school for Cardwell High School. That process is identical process to what you guys are getting ready to start. Bartlett High School just finished that probably about a year and a half ago and that was done under C-Mar. We're currently in pre-construction right now for the new East Region High School in Memphis. It's gonna be where y'all Germantown High School is, is moving over to, off Germantown Road. So, it's a process Shelby County's now started it, we're very, very familiar. I've been involved with C-Mar projects for better part of my thirty-four years in construction, so. Just some quick highlights of it, the C-Mar process is a complete, open book and transparent process. Every single item of work on the project will be competitively bid and those bids are open here with you guys. I think we've got the first, the site work package is our very first package and I think we're scheduled to receive those bids late next week. So, we're super close to getting started on some site work and I know you guys are anxious to see, see some earthmoving equipment out there, so we are too. Great time, the rain will overmove out, it should be, it should be a good time of year to get some of the site work. So, we've got that package bidding next week and then we've got some, the foundation package and the masonry package and some electrical stuff that's gonna be bidding after that. And then the plans are gonna actually be completed in latter part of June. So, we'll have what you call a guaranteed maximum price and that's what we go to contract with. We should have that sometime in July. Again, this is a very collaborative effort, we work hand in hand with architects and engineers, trying to make sure we've got our arms around the budget. Again, everything is competitively bid, and we're constantly, even through the process, even through the construction process, looking for ways that we can, that we can look at save, save money for the project. So, very open book, very collaborative process and we're, like I said, we're extremely well-versed in it. We, Linkus has been doing the C-Mar process for about, probably close to forty years. We were one of the very first contractors in parts, part of the country that actually started, started working on projects with C-Mar process, so. That just gives you a very, very brief overview. I'm happy to, to get into anything you need to know about my company, anything about the process. Again, I'm here to, I'm, we're just, we're just part of the team and we're super, super excited to be part of the team, so. Any questions you guys?
Let me throw one thing in, I asked the chair, so this, I meant to say this before, I got it, girl, I'm sorry. So, Chairman gave me a good idea the other day and I, he called me and we connected with Linkus and with A2H. And they have done this drawing, you've seen the picture, that's the one we've already shown, right? But then A2H came, came up with this design and they're working with Linkus and we're gonna have two big four-by-eight signs on location there. And this is what it's gonna look like, so it'll kind of show, you know, kind of all the players in the game. Of course, the Chargers up top, it's, it's gonna be their, their school, right? And Intuckah schools, A2H and Linkus on there. And just to kind of give everybody a, you know, a nice little look, when you go up on that property, you'll see two of those sitting at each end of the property and I think that'll be kind of nice for everybody.
Good point, we're having those made right now.
Okay, awesome.
Hopefully go up here next week or so.
Okay, I tried to get him to Photoshop through that car, put my Jeep out there, but he wasn't. He said he couldn't do that, so.
They can, they can do that.
Oh, really? He was, he was holding out on me, he said he couldn't do that.
Once the construction starts out there, will Mark Walker, will it be? Will it be barricaded or will its traffic still be moving?
We're gonna, we're, we're gonna leave all that up to law enforcement. I mean, and they'll just see, if, if they think it's, you know, the situation's, you know, warrants sometimes, you know, closing it down, they can. But most of the time, what my understanding is it'll be open, I mean, unless there's a time you need it closed.
As far as the site access?
Well, yeah, the, the main road that runs through there, I mean.
What, what we're planning on doing is putting, since such a large site, is putting some gates across the main drives and keeping those blocked. When we're not on site, obviously, these guys, Hunter, will have keys to all those gates.
I've had several people ask me that, I, because I live right there too, just because we have another bridge out on Burnett Lane and it's just such a.
They want to be able to short, they want to use that.
Like, they're driving around the world to get literally thirty seconds from where they need to be, so.
I, I don't expect it to be closed.
I wouldn't either, to be honest.
Is that little, that, that little bridge is like, Burnett Lane's gonna be closed for six months or so, just for whatever they're doing right there. Minimal, it looks like, but.
Wow, so what's your projected start date?
What we, what, what we're on, what we're hoping is, is April the twenty-ninth would be our hopeful start date. I know that once we receive the bids on the site work, those have to be approved. So, we're not quite sure, this is the very first bid package that we're gonna have, have bid, so we're not exactly sure how long that bid, or how long the approval process is, is gonna take. But that's our goal, is try to start April twenty-ninth. I know everybody's anxious to see some activity on site and we're anxious to get started, so pending approval, that, that's our hope.
And remember, a lot of that's because there's a, you know, another player in it and that's insurance. So, they are working with us, Linkus has been great about working with them, so they will have a little, you know, they'll have some input on those bids, so.
I'm assuming a groundbreaking will be scheduled for that.
So about July, that, with that guaranteed maximum price, that's kind of what finalizes with insurance, I mean, that's.
That's what they're.
That, that's, that's what the hope is, that would be the, the, the dollar amount that we would go to contract under, or sign a contract or do amendment to the contract. We're in the process of getting contract finalized right now, we've just got to amend it with the price, but. Yeah, I, I would hope that, you know, we're gonna keep the insurance company as, as, as plugged in as they would like to be. We're gonna, like, it's open books, we're gonna share everything with them and we just hope that approval process is pretty, because, you know, we got a short time, time frame.
Yep.
And we can't, we can't drag that out.
The GMP's also the number, you know, the finance, the commission's waiting on too, because that gives us a little more room to say, okay, this is gonna be the gap. Like, here's what we, you know, here's what we don't think insurance is gonna fund or, and what, here's the gap, so they won't have to go to them and say, hey, here's the, you know, here's what we're gonna need. So, but they'll know that better after GMP.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Are there any other questions, anything you want to add?
That's right, I'm, I'm here.
Good information to know.
Well, I'm, I'm here. The site plans all approved, that, that, to Covington or? I, I believe they are, I know A2H, I know is going through that process right now. I, I'm, I'm.
Vice, Vice Mayor, right?
But yes, they have been, the money commission is approved and everything's good to go.
Yeah, so, any other questions, may I, or we welcome you, go ahead.
Thank you.
We'll be able to go on site. Yes, sir, absolutely, I, I will, you know, it is hard hat, safety vest and, and protected eyewear and boots. But we'll have the hard hats and the safety vest for you guys and we could set up, we do this all-time hard hat tours. And I'll lead them or my project manager superintendent, whatever you guys, whatever fits best for your schedule, we'll make it happen. So, any, anytime the job sites, you know, obviously when we're trying to wreck steel or something, we need to, you know, be cognizant of that. But it's gonna be a lot of activity going on, but we want you guys to see what's going on, so.
We'll probably schedule those with Linkus, like, through Hunter's team or something, so we, we kind of plan it, right, right.
After hours afternoon.
Or, yes, sir.
No, no, we, we can do it whenever it's convenient for you.
So you can see it.
We, we can do it in the middle of the day, we just kind of have to watch where we step.
It'll be more convenient for me after five, so I don't have to pay off work.
Whatever works for you guys.
We hope to have some virtual walkthroughs and stuff too, Chair, so.
All right, anyway, anybody else have anything to add? Mr. Miller, we welcome you aboard.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you for being here and we look forward to working with you and seeing more of you in the future.
Well, you're gonna see a lot of us, so. We're, we're anxious and we, we appreciate the opportunity, we really do.
Thank you.
Thanks, very, appreciate it.
Uh, Mr. Jeff Morris, Esser update.
Ms. Catherine's gonna be, she's gonna start this presentation, I think, she's, her stuff is at the beginning, so we'll. You on the floor, hurry.
You promised we won't take too much of your time, we just really want to give you a basic update. We all call it Esser, but I put all the fancy, long names there for you, down at the bottom. Just wanted to kind of go over everything that we got, what we've done with it, where it's kind of gone, what it meant. So, we got about twenty-seven point seven million total from Esser one, two, and three. Everybody does, that is a lot of money, don't get me wrong, but if you divide that by ten thousand students, that, that comes out to be about two thousand seven hundred first victims. So, when you look at it that way, and things like laptops were provided and roofs and things like that, then the number starts dwindling. We are in Esser three. So, so far, we've spent twenty-two point eight million, give or take. These are the different ways, different schools that have received that amount of money so far. We have a spreadsheet that we kind of keep track, because we do have to show that it has been equitable throughout the schools in various ways. You will notice that a couple of schools are a little bit less, we have some projects in the works that's in June. Esser goes out officially, it ends June thirtieth, but there will be a rollover. That money will have to be shown to the state in August, spin out by October fifteenth. So, whatever's rolled over, which won't be very much. So those, that's how it's been divided, through the different schools. And I'm sorry, I'm not gonna read every slide to you, I think y'all can probably look at that on your own.
We'll probably supply this to them later, if they want.
So, big group was personnel, that's been about four million dollars, we put learning loss coordinators in the different buildings. We had assistants one year, we've had a speech pathologist for two years, inventory specialist for a year and a half, a school psychologist for two years. Three social workers for three years, an ESL teacher for two years, two technology specialists for three years, and myself and Jeff for the three years.
Are those going away in June, Catherine?
They are, all those, we are, and they, all the principals are aware of different things and all of, oh, that's my second layer, we will be moving into different jobs. Similar or different or whatever, we've already, some of us already are aware of that, so. And then, school psychologists, the ESL, the spare budgets, we'll absorb those and they're aware of that. So, tutoring and summer learning. We have done tutoring every year, every building receives four hundred hours, doesn't mean that they have to use it, some do, some don't. We still have about a hundred and twenty thousand left to pay out for this year. We also have summer school left to pay out for this year, which is roughly about forty thousand dollars for this summer. So, those are pictures from, I believe, last summer or summer before from some of our little kiddos. Okay, so a big part, obviously, one of the bigger parts, has been almost two million dollars in curriculum materials and supplies. Those involve, I did not list every single thing, there wasn't really enough room. Stream materials for summer camps, stream materials for the different schools. Six through eight math, K through five math, you can see different reading programs, ELA programs. Calculators for all the high schools, whiteboards for all the schools to replace all the chalkboards and get those kind of out and going. Digital textbooks for the high schools. Were just a few of the things and those are some of the pictures again. Then we moved to technology, which was another big part and another two million dollars, and those were for laptops, the Sonic boards, charging cards, audio systems, cabling, internet drops, just at time. Also, I believe one of these little drops, I'm not sure which one, but one of the microphone drops, maybe that right there, was bought through Esser money. To, so, the ability to better hear when you record, so people can see it over Facebook. One of the things you have to do is tie things into COVID or the way that crowds might be affected and of course, you can't have this rain full of people. You know, a year or so ago, when we were trying to still keep social distancing away. We also went to, each building has numerous amounts of smart boards. They have the carts to charge those in in case a child forgets to charge it overnight. Or the elementary children, when they, you know, leave, they put theirs in for the night as well. Different technology programs that have been bought over the last three years. Various things, Sam's Lab is a science, I believe, based program, Delta Math was six through twelve math. We had at one time Thriveus and Edgenuity, we've had STEM Connect, which is obviously science advancement for third through high school. Imagine Learning has been a math program for our English language learners, so we've had several of those programs. We have a literacy bus, it will be en route this summer. It will contain books catalogued by grade level for pre-grade, pre-K through eight. It also has laptops on it, it will have decoration, I guess, bus wrap. It was an old bus that was purchased, had generator put on it, had air conditioning put on it, I believe. And then we have some family literacy packets that can be given to the parents and that will go throughout the community. To give people a chance, parents and their children a chance in the summer to do some reading things with their children. They can get on the bus, they're, they're gonna have seating, bean bags and different little seats and things for them to read and then they can also check the books out. So, then we also had what was under Health Services, which was a lot of the AEDs, about twenty-seven of those. Some CPR training and then spot vision printers. We also supplied those dishwashers, which doesn't actually look like a dishwasher, but that's what that is, in three of our elementary schools. One of which we lost in Christian Elementary and will be replaced, and then also a reach-in refrigerator. Another really large area was our career technical education. This was really pushed by Dr. Collins, I will say that I believe we were one of three districts, maybe one of five. When we first wrote Esser three, it got turned down. I think maybe on our fourth, third right, we got it through and it was because of career technical. There was a big push in the state by the commissioner to do career technical, but they didn't want us to do it through Esser. We don't know why, so we're one of three probably in the state that has it in our Esser funding that got it actually pushed through and approved. And the way, some of the things that we have bought, the ICEB is, that's their textbook or their curriculum that they use. CTE equipment has been bought, one point three, and we still got some to go. And those different areas, and we've got some pictures that are coming in each of those areas to show you what it is. And then we did some CTE capital outlay, plumbing and electrical in the ag departments, and I'll let him keep going with all that. Because he was in charge of that as well. So, some of the things that we bought. These tables, laser cutters and plasma cutters and CNC routers and welders have all been purchased through Esser money. And they can make all the different things that you see there, through our ag department. We also got drones that you see in the left-hand corner, that they all can fly and use and they have used within the community. We bought a tractor for each husk hole down at the bottom, that's for our vet program, an animal program, that's actually a CPR dog gummy. That they can, it responds to them. It's battery, uh, some kind of operated, I just buy what they require, to be honest, but it is a really neat dog. You put a little thing on the end on its nose, you have to breathe into it, so it, it was pretty cool. So, then, for our coding programs, information technology, they have the little spear ball that they control, they have to put together and control. And then, different areas, different things, and all that has to do with the different kind of circuitry and. That I don't really understand either, because I'm not technology-oriented as far as coding, but it's great for them. And that's in, at Mufford High, at Brighton High, have the information technology program. Digital art and design, these are really fascinating. Whatever the students draw in that class on that pad will convert into a digital file as they draw it. So, as they draw it on that pad, it will convert into their computers, which we bought them new laptops as well. So, it'll convert into that and they can print that out, what. So it'll convert into that, and they can print that out, what they sketched immediately. They just sketch it onto the paper and the pad, or, I mean, not the paper, but the pad, and they can do it on that paper as well, so that, that's a pretty neat detail.
Is that just at one school?
The digital art is just at Mumford High School. The code, the Ag, of course, for both the, both programs of Ag are at all three high schools. The information technology is at two of the high schools. Health science, all three high schools. This is a program that we started with first, and the very first thing that they wanted was the anamogage table. Which if you have not seen a person, is just an incredible thing, and there are a lot of colleges that don't have them yet, but they can see, they can do it lengthways, vertical or horizontal. And you can see that one is, if you can see it on the far left, that's like veins, the heart, zeroed in on the heart, and you can see different places. This is muscle and bone. You can take out different parts, you can focus on different parts. They can diagnose, the, the teachers can put in different things through the program that they have. They can, there are all sorts of programs that go through there and are 3D. It's completely 3D. You just touch it, it's real neat. The kids know how to use it, or probably better than some adults. We bought the Alex patient that's, that has a camera in his eye, so he records what the students are doing and how they speak to him. He also has sensors all over him, so it records everything that they do, if they give him any KG, if they shock his heart, anything like that. They have a vein puncture, so they can practice taking your blood. Or so, and then they have the Sam, and he is, he takes, I think he's the one that the blood pressure, that lets them practice the blood pressure, and you can hear, like you can hear the, it'll speak back to you.
Hey Catherine, those embouchage tables were a big ticket item. How much, I forgot, how much were they, like, do you remember? I mean, like.
Yes, they were, they were about, yeah, yeah.
Was it, was it, when we took the tests?
And, and the teacher, and the, the kids, I mean, they love it, but I mean, why wouldn't you? It's, it's so practical, one hand on, it is amazing. Every time, and I've seen it used several different ways on several different tours, and it's the teacher finding more and more, and you can actually, Ag has discussed possibly using some of their money that they get through Carperkins and things like that, getting the programs because they have animals. You can do it with animals. Now, I don't, you know, I have not researched that, so, and I'm not buying it. But they have talked about doing that because it still uses that same cable, it's just a different computer program. So. Then, that brings us still with CTE, but with capital outlay.
Cap, capital outlay. This is our C, our coding arts kitchens. This is kind of some before pictures. They were in horrible shape, just to be perfectly honest, and with our federal money, we were able to purchase new equipment, all state-of-the-art commercial kitchen equipment, like they would use in restaurants and things. And they're able, if those were installed, and I can show you that, we, and we were able to redo the floors there as well, as you can see. So we, we've really upgraded those. Maintenance played a big part in that with us too, to finish that project up and make those kitchens really look nice. As mentioned with the vet and animal science in the Ag departments, we did some plumbing and electrical in the high schools. This is some at Covington High School where they were separating a couple of rooms where they could dedicate that to, I guess, small animal care. And we installed some fixtures and did some plumbing in there for them to get, get them ready for that. Some of the smaller projects, some of these were done prior to me assuming this role, but we added a fence at, at Mumford Elementary School around there to have some safety, a safety net basically, from the kids and the traffic that was coming through there. We installed UV light bulbs in our HBAC units to help them run cleaner, to, to kill the mold, mildew, and other microorganisms that may be in there to help, hopefully help them last longer and run more efficiently. Bait detectors, I believe, were installed in each of the middle and high schools. Last year, they came in and sprayed all of our schools and buildings at the end of the, I guess you ought to say the end of COVID, but as the kid, before the kids came back to school after they were out that period of time. We had some trees that were able to remove that were causing some roof damage, causing water and things to pool. At Charger Academy, we were able to get those trees out of the way and, and help us preserve that roof. Go back. That's our roof project. This was done prior to me coming in, but I know they took these roofs down, we were talking about that earlier, took them down to the decking, I believe, and replaced the decking as it was needed and put this TPO roofing on there, and if you notice, it's a white TPO which reflects the heat. So hopefully it would help get our, our buildings to be more energy efficient by doing so, so they won't be so hot. So that, that's a big part of, of the money right there was the roofs, and it was, I think, money well spent. You can see some of the exterior doors. We're still in this process of replacing these doors. We've done, I think, Drummond's Elementary, Mumford Elementary, Covington High School, the Alternative School, Charger Academy, and that's it. Yeah, I think that's it right now, and we've got, they're coming to the end of this month to do Mumford High School, Mumford Middle, and then they'll hit the Brighten Schools. And I'm pushing everybody that we've got outstanding projects with to finish by June fifteenth to try to help everybody out, as far as getting everything taken care of, you know, before time is up, basically. But you can see the bad conditions of the water. Yes. Well, no, Mumford Middle has, Mumford, Mumford Elementary has, but Mumford Middle and Mumford High will be done next. But these are some of the finished products that were done once we replaced everything. HBAC units, that was mentioned too, we replaced several of those, about a third of them, I think, in the system. Hopefully that's going to help us get some long life out of those. We've got some more that we were able to purchase with ESSER funds. We basically utilized all we could for those, but we had enough to buy thirteen more units for the Brighten Schools. Those schools have some big needs for some units, and they were somehow left off the initial order, I guess you would say, when we did this. But, and I think maintenance is working now within their capital improvement plan to hopefully get the installation taken care of with that. Now, maybe speaking out of term, but I think that's what we were able to buy those.
He left, you can just go ahead and say.
I think they were, but, anyway, so we're, we'll get a few of those, a few more projects taken care of with that. Those are some pictures of the restrooms prior to the renovation. We spoke about that earlier, and that's been a big thing. Kids were so happy when they came back to school when these restrooms were redone. It was just, they, they loved it, and you can see what they looked like, and then these are some, what they look like now. Looks so much better, the epoxy flooring and on the countertops. Everything is touchless, the soap dispensers, the towel dispensers, the water, the toilets, everything is touchless. And what we've tried to do is be uniform with everything we're doing. So all the restrooms will be basically about the same, and if you have a problem where you have to replace an item, it'll make it much easier to do so. So we're, we've got two more schools we were able to do. We, we started with our oldest schools, basically, and got those done. And right now, this summer, actually, I think it's May the twenty-fourth, I think that's the last day the teachers are here. They're going to mobilize and start to work, and they've assured me they'll have Brighton Middle and Brighton High School student restrooms done by June the fifteenth. So they're gonna, they're gonna work around the clock just about to get that done, but they will. And.
Oh, well, yeah, and we have about two million, two and a half million left, and we do have to still do personnel through June, and we have fourteen summer learning teachers that we will be paying. The tutoring hours are rolling in. Most of them were finishing up this week, so some of them have been paid, but we had about, I would guess, at this time, probably about two thousand hours left to pay. The restroom renovations, which will be done in May and June, and that's about one point one million of that. And then the remaining vet and animal science materials, and that pretty much will cover that money.
And I just want to back up on the, on the capital outlay. We're so blessed that we have this money to do those restrooms and HBAC uni, C units because we were going to have to replace all of that anyway. So we're just, we're blessed to be able to have this, to be able to do it, and, and take care of, we're, we're not going into general fund to, to take care of these things, so.
That's, that's another thing I left off, y'all, when I was talking about the capital projects, I couldn't remember that one. We're going to try to go back and, the bathrooms we weren't able to do here, we'll start being able to hit like locker rooms and more bathrooms like that, because we mainly just try to hit the mainly populated student restrooms because those were the most high usage. But now, with our capital projects planned, we can go back and work on, you know, locker rooms, adult bathrooms, some more stuff like that, you know. So that, that will be on that plan, you see, as well, more than likely.
That's all we have, I think.
I think that's very interesting and very informational. Any questions now?
I have one question because I wasn't aware of it. Bait detectors, where are those?
They're in the locker rooms.
And in the bathrooms.
In the bathrooms.
Do they go off at times?
They do. They go off, if you ask the principals, they go off all of the time.
Some of them, and you can, you can tweak the settings on them, like sometimes they'll go off, like they're extra sensitive, so you have to cut them off because it may not be that, it could be something different. I mean, they even had them in some places detect a fight, like the loud, the, yeah, it's, yeah.
We appreciate Ms. Hoppen and Mr. Morris.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for joining us.
What about the budget for some of the CTE stuff after this runs out? Is this something that we're gonna?
Well, I mean, you know, we have, obviously, you know, Harvey has a budget, we have some, we'll be able to keep doing that with CTE in there. Of course, there are grants, a number of things like that that we'll continue, they will continue to do, we'll continue to do, but, you know, some things, depending on what it is, well, again, we'll try to put it on that capital projects, you know, you know, the, the money that y'all appropriated for them to do the Ag Barn, Covington Ag Barn. The, the Ag Barn at Mumford that they did, I mean, a lot of that, you know, came through here, so we're going to keep doing stuff like that. We, we, we need to, we need to keep, and y'all know this, we need to keep our kids cutting edge. They need, they need to see what they're going to see when they graduate. They need to, they need to have something in the classroom and around them that looks like what they're going to see when they leave. So we have to stay updated.
That's why we fought so hard to get it approved, because at one point, we, we did consider giving up just to get it approved, so we could start spending the money because it was well into October, I think, of the first year before we could get it approved.
They weren't, you remember this chairman, they weren't going to approve the, the roofs. We went back multiple times to get the roofs approved. Because remember, this whole process was, you got to go through, it has to be approved, and any little tweak they make, we can't just say, oh, let's not do that, let's do this. No, I mean, they had to go through all this to send all this stuff back up and get it approved again, and then come back and then be approved, and it was a big process.
A lot of work.
It was.
A lot of work, but it's well worth it.
They did an awesome job, they really did.
We appreciate y'all. Dr. Bird, do you have it? I knew you didn't have the teacher of the month tonight, so.
Couple things.
Yeah, okay, come on.
Director Rescrops. Yeah, the teacher of the month was unable to be here tonight, so we will wait, and next month we'll have two. In your online folders, I have a retirement reception invitation for you all. We would love to see you there, so we made a second from three thirty until five in the afternoon at the Covington Civic Center. You're all welcome to join us. We have quite a few folks retiring, the list seems to kind of be growing. But we'll, I'll let you know the final number in the years of service probably at the May or June meeting. All three of our high schools recently sent students to compete in regional and state CTE competitions. I know we've heard a lot about CTE tonight. The PowerPoint that was scrolling before the meeting that I, that I've turned back on shows all the winners from the three high schools. And the video, the PowerPoints also posted on our website on the curriculum and instruction page. But we're very proud, y'all, of our CTE students, our teachers. Harvey Witherington is the supervisor of CTE. He does a great job, he's been doing it for a long time. I think longer than I've been an educator, but we just thank, you know, thank all of them for all their hard work and the support that you all give and the funding that you all have approved that we allocate to CTE. I know that they're all very appreciative of that, but our programs are top in the state. As you can see, on all the award winners that we have, but we have lots of kids that did really well and are moving on to nationals this summer, so we're very excited about that. The only other thing I have, we will conclude this month, our policy review, and so the second half of Section Six, which is the student section, if anybody has any questions, happy to answer those at this point. And if not, I have to close my report. Here's your chair.
Thank you, Dr. Bird.
You're welcome.
Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Billy Dawery. Always glad to see Mr. Dawery.
Glad to be, you're glad to be seen. All right, a couple of things, I want to bring your attention. First of all, Chairman, TSBA has sent us an agreement, policy manual maintenance. Speaking of policies, you all know that we have an agreement with TSBA and for our district policy maintenance in writing, and so we, it's time for a three-year agreement, and anything exceeding the fiscal year this board has to approve, so, Mr. Chairman, I would ask a motion to be made tonight allowing Dr. Combs to execute a three-year agreement with TSBA for our district policy manual maintenance and online service agreement.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Jenkins, second by Mr. Kirk. Any questions about that? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you, sir. Next thing I want to let you all know is, you'll see in your folder there, we've been awarded round four of the Supply Chain Assistance funding that's been coming over the past couple of years since COVID, this time, two hundred sixty-two thousand, two hundred seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. But we've brought it into one forty-three in an amendment. But before I start talking about amendments, I want to, obviously, it's budget time. We're about ready to close out the current fiscal year, we're wrapping up all our year-end amendments. There's a significant amount of those amendments in the one forty-one. Also, we have some one forty-two wrapped up, and some things we're doing in one forty-three. But for budget presentation, you know, the new budget is due to County Commission by May the first. Three things we're missing right now for budget presentation. The state's not released the health insurance numbers. The TESA student ratio or student number has not been ratified, the new number, so we don't know exactly for sure yet which one to budget. And the third thing is, is Director Bailey's advised me, the county's probably going to see an increase in the contribution for the TCRS legacy. I anticipate maybe about one percent on our payroll, that's a significant amount of money. All that said to say, Mr. Chairman, I would like to request the board that we do like we've done in the past, that set a date at the end of the month to come back for a budget reading, so we can go over the budget in detail and look at all of that. At the same time, it may be a good idea, we've got a number of amendments we can take up tonight, but it may be a good idea just to save that for then, because as we go through the year, we're going to see something else. The other thing, quite frankly, if you look at the budget documents, we put the amendment documents in your packet. We've got close to four million in insurance recovery now, and I see more coming this month, and so if we do these tonight, we're probably going to bring more back the thirtieth. It may just be easier to do one budget amendment document on the thirtieth, if y'all think that's okay. If not, we can take these three up. Either way, if we do it tonight or if we do it the thirtieth, it's going to the County Commission, the first meeting in May, which is, and the thirtieth also, I have to have the budget to Director Bailey by statute, May first, so if you all approve it that night, we discuss it, we'll make all the changes you want, I can submit it to him on the May first. Of course, as we know, as things change, we may change it before our presentation in June, you all will hear that in your next meeting. But, Mr. Chairman, I don't know what the pleasure of the board is.
Mr. Dawery and I talked about a meeting on April thirtieth at five o'clock to do this, and I think it would be good to wait and do the amendments all at one time. I mean, it's up to y'all, but that, whatever the board wants to do.
It sounds efficient.
Can we have thirty more minutes?
Five thirty, can we do it at five thirty?
Yes, we can do it at five thirty. I'm open, I'm, whenever y'all want to be here, as early and as late as y'all want to be here.
Five thirty, give folks a little bit more time.
What day is that on?
It's a Tuesday.
Five thirty, May thir, April thirty, at five thirty, we do the budget amendments then.
Do the budget amendments and then go over the new budget.
Kind of a budget work session.
Yes.
That's all we're discussing.
And it's probably going to be a couple of hours, just FYI.
Yeah, yeah.
This, Dr. Combs is cooking, actually.
All right, do we have a motion to do that? Motion by Mr. Pecan, second by Mr. Kirk. Anybody have anything to add to it? Those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
All right, so we'll probably change those amendment documents that are in your work file. You may see them manipulated or changed, you know, for later numbers. Also, the last thing I'll do before I sit down, you'll see the financials are in there on the trustee's report. There's no other questions?
Have we seen, seen any formal funding on the interim billings yet?
No, sir, I was actually, I was on the phone with Tima today, and they are working through it. I've had several assurances recently that they are walking it through, and I've expressed my urgent desire. that they are walking it through, and I've expressed my urgent desire to have this funding by May the fifteenth. Our progress, I mean, our, uh, request has been submitted and sitting there waiting, and so we're looking at a little over six million dollars. Uh, well, four of it, uh, from FEMA, some of it from the state, and part of it, you know, is our match that we budgeted from fund balance. So, uh, yes, I'm hoping by May fifteenth, but you know, we started in October last year, hoping, remember, so we're gonna continue to hope till we get it.
All right, so that sounds good. Any other?
That's it for me unless somebody has questions.
We got unemployment money in yet?
No, sir. We don't have unemployment money in yet. We're waiting on it.
If there's no other questions, thank you, Mr. Dawery.
Thank y'all.
Well, that brings us down to other business. Uh, Dr. Combs, would you like to add anything, or we have any other business to, uh, discuss?
I, I don't. Like I already said, you know, thanks for the, I mean, I'm telling you, those folks running that Estor thing, that was a big deal.
That money had been well spent. I don't care.
Where would it have come from if we didn't have Estor?
We would be, we would be hurt. We would really be.
That's right. We'd have had to figure out a fifteen-year capital project plan and try to come up with it, do some fundraising. And if I'm not mistaken, I mean, you talk about, you know, monitoring, they, they did a great job presenting, and they were pretty calm while they were doing it, but there was a lot of weeping and gnashing of teeth. Because who's the, I mean, that's directly audited by the comptroller.
A single lot, guaranteed single audit. It's gonna be picked up audit because of the vast, anything over seven hundred fifty thousand dollars is guaranteed single audit, and you saw how many of those projects.
Right. And so you're talking about twenty-seven million dollars, because you know, you can hear all kinds of stuff in the last three years about how it's being spent. The comptroller audits all that stuff, and so it was, they're, they're checking.
Y'all tell them thank you for all the amendments that we're gonna have to bring over the last couple of years.
But it's been well spent, well, well worth it, I think, myself. Uh, if anybody, if no one else has anything to, go ahead.
You're, you're providing dinner on the thirtieth, right? Or do I have to make a motion?
I made myself a note right here. I'm gonna see if somebody will provide dinner.
There you go.
If anybody wants the kosher meal, you can tell me now.
Five thirty, April thirtieth, it'd be here. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Ubank, second by-